At this time, I would like to call this evening's meeting to order. Let the record reflect that today is Thursday, September 14, and it is 6:39 PM. Board Secretary, may I have the roll call?
Trustee Ahuna. Trustee Kaka. Trustee Akina.
Aloha mai.
Trustee Alapa.
Eio.
Trustee Galuteria.
Yo.
Trustee Souza.
Yo.
Trustee Trask. Trustee Wahehe. And Chair Hulu Lindsey.
Here.
We have nine trustees present.
Thank you. Aloha Makako, everyone, and welcome to our Hawaii Island Community Meeting here in Naniwai Mea. We are so very happy to be here and share this time with all of you. Tonight's meeting can be viewed and observed via livestream on OHA's website at www.oha.org/livestream. At this time, I would like to ask each trustee to introduce themselves and their staff, and I'll start with trustee Galuteria.
Aloha mai kako. We're so pleased to be here. It's that Waimea mist that welcomed us today. And it continued as we made our way up and down from here to Koahai and then back up. And we just, and we see friends, and old and new. And Sam Puma Hulani over here, my goodness. It's wonderful. So, happy to be here. Two ears and one mouth, listen twice as much as we speak.
Aloha mai kako. I'm Luana Alapa trustee for the island of Molakai and Lanai, and I'm so happy to be here. It's a beautiful, I call it God's country because it truly is. It's gorgeous, and I love today what we had. The privilege to meet with the students here and, of course, the staff, and to learn so much of what has happened over the years of this school. And I'm so very proud, so proud to be Hawaiian. At the same time, I also enjoyed getting to know the people. I have a lot of family here. I'm a Kanahele, on my mother's side. And we have family that live up here from the Sprouts, and my uncles, even though I forgot to tell them to come tonight, but that's okay, they can watch. And they're gonna get me after this, I know. That's okay. So anyway, it was, it's just a wonderful time to be up here, and I'm looking forward to meeting all of you tonight. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Aloha mai kako, everyone. I want to say mahalo to our Big Island trustee for hosting us this evening, Mililani Trask. This has been a wonderful time. Thank you for the site visits you've arranged. And to our Chair Hulu Lindsey for convening us this evening. My name is Kele'i Akina. I'm a trustee at large, and there are very few places in the world where I feel as at home as I do here on the Big Island. That's because my roots are here. My father's line, the Akina, and my mother's line, the Lupanui, both hail from Ka'ou. And we have many relatives who've been in Paho'a, Miluli'i, Kohala. As I drove through there today, I could hear the winds. "Maika'i kama kani'oh Kohala." And they spoke to my heart. I've enjoyed being here, but at the same time, I've also been saddened. Today, when we were at Kailapa, listening to the struggles for water, the very essence, vae, and how our people are deprived of it, broke my heart, and I hope we can come up with some solutions to that. Yet, at the same time, when we visited Waimea Nui and saw the community organizing and the great vision for a sovereign people who are sovereign over their own needs and who are meeting those needs rather than relying upon an external government, that was just amazing to see what they're doing up there. And here, where we're sitting today, Kanuokaaina, I can't tell you how proud I am, and I'm sure all my colleagues are, of the young people and the teachers, the Haumana and Kumuu who are distinguishing themselves. I've been all over the world for education, and I can tell you that the students we are producing here are of world class, and you can all be proud. Please, share your mana'o with us tonight. We need to hear what your concerns are. We need to be informed. I'm looking forward to that. I also want to recognize Ruben Sierra, my trustee aide in the back who's here with me today. Thank you. Aloha, everyone. Thank you for letting me be here.
Aloha mai kako. I am John Wa'e the fourth, a trustee at large. I also want to express my, just my gratitude, and I am very happy and heartwarming to be on Hawaii Island, especially in Waimea here. I spent most of my, the summers of my childhood here, and it's always great to be here. And I got to visit and honor my grandparents at the Emiloa Church, and I'm always grateful when I get to do that. I do want to thank everyone who, first of all, you know, put this meeting together, who hosted us, all the staff, and our lovely colleague and our friend, Mililani Trask, our Hawaii Island trustee, for all the work that she did. And I know she really worked hard to do this for us. And I thank each and every one of you, especially the people from Waimea and from Hawaii Island for joining us here today, and everyone joining us virtually as well. My aide is Crane Akina, and he's, he's all the way there in the back, and I'm grateful to have him with me as well. And again, I look forward to hearing your mana'o, and thanks again for coming out and for supporting us.
You can clap. I heard like, aloha mai kako. I just, I guess I felt comfortable because this is where I was born and raised, and I just love this beautiful place. And it's just great to be back. We had a wonderful day today. We visited where we should have visited. We visited with the po' of our charter schools statewide, right here today. And we heard some really, really concerning issues, and we'd like to advocate and see how we can help. We also visited the beautiful lands of the Department of Hawaiian Homelands and the promises of tomorrow by their very active structure of government within this homestead. We're very impressed to see what they're able to do and accomplish. And then, of course, we went to Kailapa and visited their hardship, actually. And we're sorry to hear about that. But you know, after experiencing the fires in Maui, I can see the concerns of Kailapa because the same thing can happen to them if the, if the water is not protected so that they have it when they need it. So, it was a very heartwarming and educational day for me and I'm sure my colleagues. So, thank you for having us here. We want to hear from you tonight. And before I pass the mic, I'd like to introduce my staff. I have Kanani Iaya, my aide. Amber Kalua, another aide. And the board secretary, Lehua Itokazu. Thank you.
Aloha, everybody. I'm Mililani Trask. I am the trustee for the Big Island. I wanted to thank you all for welcoming us here and just to say that, you know, it's always so uplifting and beautiful to come to Waimea. The welcoming that we had over here this morning with all the youth was, was like seeing something unfold in the future that you had only dreamt and prayed about when you were younger. But to come here and see it manifest, you know what I'm saying? The whole day has been something like mahalo ke'akua. I wanted to introduce for you my staff on the Big Island. She is here with her husband. She is Kaheli Lanning Kiavikani with her husband Pastor DJ from your blue church right here in Waimea. And she and her staff have been working so hard over here. They brought all the food over. We did the shopping, ice and everything. Thank you so much because without their help, we wouldn't be here enjoying this. And also, of course, mahalo to all of those who showed us the situation on the homelands, the farming, and other things. I wanted to also thank Senator Malama Solomon, who is Hawaiian homesteader from Waimea, state senator who helped our people for many years. Beautiful to be here and you folks, you know, the place of your ohana. And thank you for welcoming us.
Aloha pumehana. I'm Kelea Kaka, and I'm honored to serve as your OHA Oahu trustee. However, I am a Hawaii Island girl. Mahalo ante. My mom's a Hilo girl. We have ohana in Waipio Valley, Kohala, all over. So, I do represent Oahu, but I'm not limited to just Oahu. I'm honored to also serve as OHA's, the Chair for OHA's Committee on Beneficiary Advocacy and Empowerment. A lot of that work is legislative, but a lot of that work is simply being here in the community so we can stay on the pulse of the needs and concerns of our people here. And we're very much looking forward to hearing your mana'o because we need to hear what is working that we're doing so that we continue it and what not working so good. So, that's why we're here. It's important that we're here to hear the perspective of our people. And joining me this evening is my team, Nathan Takeuchi over there. And also, a big part of my team is my ohana. I have my baby over there, matching in red, waving. She's shakaiing over there. And my husband in red and camo. So, we're very thankful to be here, and I want to say mahalo anui to our beloved Mililani Trask, our Hawaii Island trustee. We're very thankful for the wonderful site visits we've had today. It's been very inspiring to be with Kiki Tukupuna today and to Kaheli Lani for lovingly caring for our trustee Trask and making all of this happen. As well, beautiful flowers and just a point of correct, or a green church. They're at the Green Church. You can find them at the Green Church over here. Church row. Yeah, green, blue, green, blue. And mahalo anui to our Chair and all of her staff, our administration, our CEO, our COO, for bringing us all together. It really is a labor of love to get all of these cameras working, the livestreaming. It's a lot. So, mahalo anui to everyone for making it possible. I also want to note that many years ago, when the school was newer, I was very fortunate to join my ohana. My grandfather, when he was serving as US Senator Daniel Akaka, we came to tour the facility here, and we sat in on the classes here with the Haumana. And he was just so impressed with the work that the students are able to do here and what the staff, the environment that they provide here. And when trustee Trask had asked me my mana'o on some ideas on where we could do site visits and meetings, I said, "I know just the place." And it's here. It's here at this kula. So, mahalo anui for welcoming us. We look forward to hearing your mana'o this evening.
Delina mai meke aloha. My name is Dan Ahuna, and I represent the islands of Kauai and Ihow. First of all, I'd like to thank our trustee here from the Big Island, trustee Mililani Trask for hosting us. And she did a wonderful job. You know, in all, in all the years that I've been here, this was a fulfilled day. And I just want to thank her for, for that. Another thing, another thing I want to say is it was so good to see all the po' kumu today here at this, you know, I represent Hawaiian-focused charter schools. You know, I was involved in charter schools for many years and still involved with charter schools. And I was so thankful to see everyone here today and just to have a ku'ka session with them. It was an honor. With me tonight is my aide, Anuhia Diamond, and she is up back there. And I just want to say thank you for, for coming out here and taking the time.
Aloha mai kako. My name is Keone Souza, a newest at-large trustee. It's great to see friends and family. And I'd say mahalo Kanuokaaina for, first of all, hosting us and also grooming the next generation of leaders. It was very empowering today, the conversations that we had. I want to introduce my staff. Rochelle Kim back there. And also, mahalo to trustee Trask for setting all this up, and her aides as well. Like I said earlier today, OHA is the voice and vehicle for a lot of things we're trying to get done. And I'm looking forward to quality conversation tonight and seeing how we can be the most effective in serving our people. So, thank you guys very much.
Aloha mai kako. I'm Colin Kippen. I'm the interim executive director at the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. And there are a number of us that are here tonight from OHA staff. And I'd like to introduce Casey Brown, who is the chief operating officer for the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. He's going to introduce the staff.
Mahalo Colin. Aloha Waimea. Okay, so there's a lot of us here. We brought a small squadron. So, I need to use a list so that I don't miss everyone because I can't see them all. So, we have our Director of Community Engagement and interim Director of Advocacy, Captain Po'e. He's here in the back. We have two public policy advocates working on Captain's team, and they are Shane Palacot Nelson, Okoni back there, and Kamalei Puole Micho, she's back there too. Our land director, Tim Wong, is in the house. Our IT manager, Tiger Lee, back there. Big support for this meeting. Our Communications Director, Alice Silbanous. Our multimedia designer, Jason Lees, who's up here on the front, manning the camera. And then we have our beneficiary services agents. We have, coming over from the Hilo side, Ilima Kela is here. Ilima, out in the front. And then we have Don Tanimoto up here in the front. Don holding it down for the west side of Hawaii Island. Mahalo, Don. Mahalo kapuhana and chair.
Mahalo. Thank you. And I'd like to introduce just one aide that I didn't hear her name. Ley Durant. I'm sorry. I also want to introduce our Hilo staff. Do I have anyone else from Hilo? Thank you. First up on our agenda tonight is the status of OHA activities. Lehua, do we have anyone signed up to testify on this item? Thank you. So, I'll turn the time over to Colin Kippen, our interim CEO.
He has expertise in mic and singing. So, I wanted to just review something for you folks because it just kind of dawned on me as I was sitting here thinking about what I wanted to say. So, 45 years ago, in 1978, they created the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. And the purpose of the office was to change the status quo for native Hawaiians. That was the purpose then. It's the purpose now. And our mission is to better the conditions of Hawaiians, which raises the question always, what is the condition? So, what we do at OHA, and this may sound a little abstract, maybe even esoteric, but what we do is we look at the data because what we're always trying to do is figure out what it is that we need to address to make things better for Hawaiians. And we collect that data, we publish that data, and it is a big part of what we do at the office. If any of you are involved in that kind of work where you need to understand what's going on with the community in a really broad sense, like, how are the, how are we as Hawaiians doing? We have that data for you. And the reason I think it's important is because all of these trustees here are always trying to figure out what is it that they're going to do to make those conditions better. And so, they have to always have a baseline. You always have to know where we are so we can figure out, you know, what's working and what's better. And, you know, we cannot just focus on, on the things that we want to improve. We also have to really focus on the things that we're doing well because those are the things that will carry us forward, right? And so, I'm just going to do a really brief overview on a couple of things that are going on in our, in my report to you. One of them is that the Department of Aquatic Resources is promulgating some rules regarding the Manta Ray Sanctuary designation at Ke'ahoe and also the, at Makako Bay. And the reason this is an important thing is that in 2000, the Supreme Court said that if any regulatory body was going to make any decision on any kind of issue, land use issue in Hawaii, they had to pay attention to the traditional and cultural, cultural resources that Hawaiians would need to access and be able to, to protect and practice around. So, there are basically three things that always come up now since this case was decided and is Kapaa'kai o'Ka'aina versus the Land Use Commission. And one of the things is, is there a traditional and customary resource that we want to protect? The second thing is, are these rights being exercised by Hawaiians? And the last thing is, how is it that this entity, this agency, is going to protect those traditional and customary rights for Hawaiians? So, that process is going on now. Rules are being promulgated. And I know some of you are probably very actively involved in that conversation. So, that's something that's really important. The second two issues have to do with Mauna Kea. And there has been a working group that was formed. It met. It has rendered a report. The Office of Hawaiian Affairs had some strong reservations about the construct, the way that thing was formed, but they participated nonetheless because they felt it was their duty and obligation to be part of that process. The last thing that's happened is that the National Science Foundation has begun a public scoping for the sighting of the TMT on Mauna Kea. And the reason this is important is that what has surfaced is that federal dollars are going to go into this project or are being proposed to go into the project. The way it works in the federal law is that if you have a federal project that's funded by federal dollars, you have to do what is called a Section 106 consultation, which means you have to consult with the Hawaiian community. And so, that process is about to begin. There has been some preliminary scoping that has occurred, but it is our belief that federal funds will be used for the TMT. And when that process occurs, the community needs to be heard through the Section 106 process. So, this is something different. This is actually, I think, an improvement to be able to have the community weigh in on what they think about TMT. We know that there's a lot of conflict. The Hawaiian community may not be completely united on this, but that's all right. But this process that is going to be opened up is, I think, a really important thing. So, I would, and you are literally here. You know, the Mauna is right here. It's part of your daily life. I just want you to know that many of us are looking forward to what will happen when this process opens up so that the native Hawaiian community can be heard. So, that's basically what we're doing. We will post all of the data that we have collected, which talks about your community and, you know, things that are really positive in terms of health, education, economic development, and, and housing. And we want you to take advantage of looking at what we've written and what we've studied because I think it'll help you to see what the Office of Hawaiian Affairs is doing. The last thing that I wanted to mention was the fact that the Office of Hawaiian Affairs has been responding to the tragic fires in Lahaina. And I would like to ask Chair, would you please just quickly, just brief the board on what it is the board has been doing with respect to the Mauna Kea? Excuse me, with respect to the Lahaina West, the Western Lahaina fires?
Thank you, yes. As you well know, we're quite devastated in Maui. But we're really trying through prayers and getting together with one another to be able to understand not why this happened, but how it happened, and hoping to move on and trying to help each other. And we have worked with several entities since the fires and in the last month. First of all, the board has approved $5 million to help in the displaced Hawaiians in Lahaina. We have not, we have not decided how we're going to use it because we have met with community leaders. We've met with the mayors. We have created a PIG here on our board so that we could investigate what would be the best way to deploy our money. So, we decided that we would listen to the people. They will tell us when they need it. In the meantime, there are federal funds just, just coming and streaming into Maui to help them with short-term housing and food, clothing. Hopefully, not many of them lost their employment so that they can continue paying their regular bills. We have also had, we've assisted in assisting. Oh, yeah, yeah. We have so many things that we did. So, we met with an entity called GEM, which is Global Empowerment, Global Empowerment Mission, which is an entity that gives out money. These people were in Ukraine all this time for the last two years, and they gave out money through vouchers for, for housing. So, the second day after the fire, the owner and founder of this entity came to Maui. And do you know that everybody was in such a, you know, disturbed mind, I want to say, that nobody paid attention to him? So, he somehow got my name and asked for, for a meeting. And when I met with him, this is what he offered. And he needed a place to do business. We let him go into our OHA office. And within the first day, we gave out $1.5 million of vouchers for short-term housing. And this was all his money, that entity money. So, our people, well, the, the good thing was that he said, "Let's do a pilot day." And that pilot day was the first day. So, I called all the Hawaiian organizations, and I said, "If you know anybody in Lahaina that lost their house, please tell them to come to OHA's headquarters the next day." And we had 135 families clean up the 1.5. So, yes, that was really good. And then, we had the opportunity of partnering with the Lieutenant Governor and CNHA on allowing them to use our big warehouse in Hakune, Kakaku Makai, to store all the donations. to store all the donations that were coming in from Oahu. They would drop it off there and then it would be packed into trailers and put on the barge and sent to Maui. So we were able to get that kind of help and we were a participant in that. We also accommodated a concert at the Grand Wailea. The Grand Wailea offered us the place and we turned it over to the promoters of the concert. They made $100,000 and, and the Grand Wailea told us that we could have it for free. So it, it was a really good partnership for us. Anything else? Yeah, so we have $5 million floating and we're hoping to put it to really good use. Yeah, we do have, we're thinking that, we're thinking how we can use the money, short-term, middle-term, long-term, you know, so that it's spread out and it helps the people along their way to recovery. Hopefully, it doesn't take too long. The hazmat people are in there now, trying to clean up the toxicity of the, of all the toxic, toxic waste that was burned and, and whatever is in there. So hopefully, they clean it up. We were told that all of this will be shipped off the islands to the mainland. It's not gonna remain in Hawaii. So yeah, it's been a rough one month for us, but Keakua is there to help us. And we count on his help. Thank you. Okay, we'd like to move on. First, we're gonna take a presentation. And before I do, Lehu, do we have anyone on, want to make any comments for the next presentation?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
So I, I wanna, I wanna call on Ku Kahakalau. Ku?
Aloha mai kako, aloha e keakua manaloa, me na kupuna omako. Aloha mai na alakai o keia oihana i kaika Oka' Office of Hawaiian Affairs. And aloha no ika lehu lehu i ako ko mai ne i kea hihi. My name is Dr. Ku Kahakalau. And I would like to, first of all, welcome you to Waimea. Thank you for being here. We saw each other last year around the same time. And I still wanna mahalo you also for that honor of the recognition that was bestowed on me in Hilo the last time. And I'm here to give you an update about Waipio Valley. Waipio is a wahipana, which means that from as long as we can remember, every story, every mention of Waipio talks about the mana of that place, talks about the importance of that place for our people. Many of us are descendants, direct descendants of the Ali'i that lived in Waipio. And many others have been benefited from all the ike and all of the research that was done in Waipio, the connections that were cultivated between our cousins in the South Pacific and us through Waipio. And so Waipio really is, when we look at Hawaiian history, going all the way back to the beginning of time, to Kane and Kanaloa, who used to drink Awa in Waipio, you know, this is a history that really shows who we as Hawaiians are and how lehu lehu and mano mano great and numerous the knowledge of our kupuna was and is. And so this is a valley that is important to every single Hawaiian if you know your history and if you know your culture. Unfortunately, it is also a valley that has been used and abused by the tourist industry to attract people to come to Hawaii Island. And over the decades, the increase of tourists going down into Waipio, where they have absolutely no place to go because the only public property is the road that goes into Waipio. As soon as you get off that road, you are trespassing on private property that is never mentioned by the tourist industry. And they're using Waipio as this destination when you go on the airplane in California already, you're gonna see Waipio like it's a free-for-all place that anybody can come and anybody can do whatever they want to. And that is absolutely not the case. Just to tell you how huge the impact is, before COVID, on a long weekend, we had up to 7,000 renter Jeeps going down from Friday to Monday. 7,000, they were counted. And that is, if you've ever been on that road, there shouldn't even be 70 cars on the road, never mind 7,000. And so we've had issues in Waipio and I just wanna tell you a little bit about what's been happening since, let's see, here we go. So this is our Ko'a'eke'a lookout. And these are some of the people that have been coming together and working towards protecting Waipio. My clicker is not clicking. Oh, am I cut it the wrong way or? No, oh, face to you, oh, calamity. All right, there we go, here we go. There we go.
Press the down button.
Oh, the down button. Okay. So for the last, since the 1970s, and this is the mayor admitting that the county of Hawaii has completely disregarded any concerns by the Waipio community in regards to the safety of the road. And they have failed to maintain that road. That is public knowledge that's been acknowledged by the mayor. Then all of a sudden, in February of last year, the mayor had an emergency declaration based on a geothermal, a geotechnical engineering report, which said the road was unsafe, that allowed only farmers and residents to go down into the valley. In April, a group of surfers primarily, with help from native Hawaiian legal corporation, filed a lawsuit against the mayor. And so they went into mediation. And based on that, the mayor in September of 2022 issued an amended declaration, an amended emergency declaration, which I'm gonna explain in a moment. In November, thanks to trustee Mililani's efforts, we were connected with legal support through OHA. But they were so disconnected from who we are and what we need and what we want that their suggestions made no sense to our community whatsoever. The things that they suggested were just not, we could not operationalize them in Waipio because they just wouldn't, wouldn't have worked. And so we occupied, quote unquote, the lookout, whoops, for three months. And then we had a large corner storm in December and our tents were shredded and we had to stop. In the meantime, since then, the county has begun clearing the brush on the Makai side as well as the beginning of the Mauka section of the road. And then in March, one of the tour operators sued to make sure that they continue to go down to Waipio and make money down in Waipio. And then this summer, the mayor continued this emergency status and made it very clear that whatever happens in Waipio, he, the mayor, had sole discretion of figuring out who can go down to Waipio, who cannot go down to Waipio, et cetera, including tourists. And so now we are in September 2023, one year after our initial meeting at Ko'a'eke'a. And no actual work has been begun by the county to actually mitigate the main problem, which is not the trees above and below the road, but the erosion that has happened since the 1970s beneath the road that is making the road unsafe. And so we really need koku'a. Let's see if I'm going in the right, okay, other direction. There we go. So the amended emergency declaration said, no pedestrians. Now, there are people that live in the valley that don't have four-wheel drive. They have to walk up and down, they're illegal now. No horses. Our young people that don't have cars, they've been going down on horseback as long as we've had horses in Hawaii. All of a sudden now, we are illegal, right? We Hawaiians that live in this area wanna go down on the horse, which is how we've been going down, especially, as I said, our young boys who cannot drive. The other part is no, oh gosh, this is so far away, uncovered vehicles. Well, those of you who know farmers, farmers don't have ATVs with covers. We have this kind that is un, you know, uncovered. We need to go down to, to farm. And whenever we can take our ATVs instead of our truck, it's A cheaper and B safer and faster also. And four-by-four only, we're fine with that. At the same time, tour operators are still allowed to go down when the road is unsafe. And all they're doing is making money and giving nothing back to Waipio whatsoever. And then Hawaii Island residents, which we are fine with, Hawaii County residents. And then they had this, anyone claiming cultural and traditional and customary rights. That could be any Joe Schmo from anywhere in the world coming and saying, I have customary rights to go down to Waipio. And there's nothing we can do based on this amended emergency declaration. So all of a sudden, we, the people of Waipio became illegals and the tour operators are the ones who are legal. And that is just not acceptable to our community. And so the kupuna said, lava. This is the first time this kupuna ever stood up. This is the last generation born and raised in Waipio Valley. Because after the tidal wave, after the war, everybody moved up and we farmed down there, but hardly any Hawaiians lived down there. It's mostly alternative life types, type people. So the kupuna said, lava. Kapu'o Waipio, he wahipana'o Waipio. Waipio is a sacred place and it needs to rest. And so this kupuna, together with these five whahine, organized this kupuna checkpoint, which I said we manned from September 19th last year till December 18th, 2022, when the windstorm came, the big corner storm. Some of you might remember that. And what happened at this, during that time, is that we educated people from around the world about the issues and about the history of Waipio, including students from Kanu'oka'aaina. I was so proud of the seniors from this school who immediately, when they heard about this, demanded from the administration that they could go down there and find out from the kupuna what was happening because obviously the media, you know, was not reporting our side of the story. And so this is what we were doing, this educating people 24/7. And we are still in need of help. So one of the things that we are really concerned about is that as soon as the county actually fixes the road, which, you know, could take decades, we don't know, but we need to make sure that that Waipio resident, I mean Hawaii Island residents only becomes a permanent thing. Because we just cannot carry the amount of tourists that think they can come here and have a right to go down when they have no place to go. The second thing is that the tour operators need to get limited access or no access and they have to reciprocate, right? You cannot just take, take, take and make money. This is the same story that the American businessman who overthrew Queen Leoh Okalani used was protection of their private property. The lawsuit said that his property was his business and the county was damaging his property, his business. That, that's, that was the argument. So we need legal help to challenge that lawsuit. And I don't even know what happened to it, but that's something that we need help with. And I would love to volunteer to work with trustee Trask on this in whatever ways that we can. But we need to have legal representation that actually understands our issues and listens to our issues. Because the people we were assigned to had no clue and didn't even try to understand our realities. And then finally, we're hoping that OHA can help us with educating people about Waipio in general. Because every Hawaiian should know about Waipio. And so we are going to submit some grants when the, when the next cycle comes out. But basically, when we started Kanu'oka'aaina, first as a school within a school at Honoka'a, and then in 2000, started Kanu'oka'aaina Public Charter School, it was all based on data. And the data basically said that our Hawaiian kids are brilliant, but this system is not working for them. It's a disconnect there. It's not, our kids are not the problem. They're the evidence, not the crime. And we created a Hawaiian-focused school. And you guys know it's working. And I wanna mahalo everybody that is still part of Kanu'oka'aaina, that is continuing to make it work. I appreciate it so much that this vision is continuing to thrive. But our data also showed that 12 years of highest quality education is not enough, that our kids need more handholding after they graduate. And so what I've been working on since I left Kanu'oka'aaina in 2010 is to create a post-secondary program for native Hawaiians. And we call it EIA, which is Education with Aloha, Ecoversity. When we were here, our kids told us the most important thing for successful education for Hawaiians is aloha. Aloha, manu'ahi, infinite, renewable, all of those things, right? And that's all we need to make sure that our kids are taken care of. And so for post-secondary, it's the same thing. So we're calling this Ecoversity, which means everybody has to learn how to aloha'aaina and ma'lama'aaina, EIA, Ecoversity, Education with Aloha. Obviously, EIA also means sovereignty. And so this is a culture-based education and career training program for native Hawaiians ages 15 to 30. And we're just in the process, we've been beta-testing our courses and talking to young Hawaiians, what do they need for, for, for our post-secondary program? Because we have a huge issue here, right? And the data call it, it doesn't lie, right? Right now, 55% of our people live on the mainland, on the continent. It's not a mainland, it's just a continent. If that continues, in 20 years, we have less than a quarter Hawaiians living in Hawaii. I mean, this, we should all be upbra, I mean, just outraged and, and just working day and night to stop that. And yet, I don't see nobody having a focused concerted effort on stopping this outmigration. And it's not just outmigration, right? It's forced, forced migration, economic. Our kanaka up there are economic refugees. That's what they are. They, they didn't go there because they wanted to. They are there because they have no way to survive in our kula'iwi, in our homeland. And so we are creating EIA Ecoversity to make sure that our young people stay home. And we need your support for that as well. And we have all kinds of programs, you know, that, that build on what we have started here at Kanu'oka'aaina and the other Hawaiian-focused charter schools throughout the islands to create a quality post-secondary program that's culturally based and really allows our opio to reach their highest level. That's called kuli'eikenu'u. And who first put that out? Liloa. Kialii nui o Liloa, where was he from? Waipio, right? So right there, all of our history goes right back to Waipio Valley. So I really wanna thank you folks for allowing me to speak this evening. I wanna thank you for your ongoing efforts to help. I think your grants program has gotten so much better than when we had to raise standardized test scores for middle schools by 2% or whatever, whatever. So we are really looking forward to coming to OHA for funding for EIA Ecoversity. And then hopefully also getting more support for Waipio Valley because the county is our enemy. You know, they're not our friend. They are there to prostitute Waipio for the benefit of a few non-Hawaiian tour operators and whatnot, whatnot. And we need to ma'lama' this wahipana' of our kupuna. And we need to maalama this wahipana of our kupuna. So mahalo nui ya oko pakahi ya pau. Thank you so much. I really appreciate this opportunity to share my manao.
Mahalo.
Mahalo, Koo.
Koo, can I ask you something?
Sure.
The Denton Law Firm that was supposed to be assisting the people in YPO, what did they actually do, if anything?
They told us that we should find somebody that walks up and down the hill and challenge that, the emergency declaration. Now, as I said, the people that walk up and down the hill are alternative lifestyle people. They want to fly under the radar. There's no way that they're going to be part of a lawsuit where everybody knows who they are and blah, blah, blah. So that was one, right? Then the other part was, oh, with the ATVs, well, then people just are supposed to buy ATVs that have a cover, which can't be used on our farm. They're just on the road, right? We're in the lobbies. So every suggestion that they had just didn't make any sense. And it wasn't realistic for our reality. And then we never heard from them again.
Where's Colin? Colin? Did Denton Law Firm submit a bill to our office?
I have to check.
Yeah. When the issue had come up, it was raised to OHA. And I had requested assistance and legal aid for YPO, which was approved. We have requested for Na'ivi Wordman, who helped on Mauna Kea, to come up. But instead, Denton's law firm was hired. Where is our attorney? Where is our attorney in this room? He's here? Where is he? Captain never come? Oh, no, it's Everett. Yeah. You know what? We need to check on this. I mean, it's an outrage, what is happening there. YPO is not ceded lands. In the history of it, it is primarily owned by kamia schools and the tenants who live there, the native tenants that reside there. Mayor Roth, I have spoken with him about it. Initially, NHLC was brought in. This board, OHA, I mean, not all you folks, but you know, OHA has given them millions of dollars. Native Hawaiian Legal Corporation, NHLC, came in supporting the tourists against YPO. And we could not get from our office a Hawaiian attorney. And instead, they hired Denton idiots from Maui who do nothing. You know what I'm saying? Denton is not, Denton is not from here. Denton doesn't know a damn thing here. Isn't Denton Law Firm from Maui?
No, they're from Honolulu.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. No, that does explain it. You know, I don't think, you know, I don't, I think we do have a problem with Mayor Roth. I have talked with him about it. It's very clear when the data came out for 7,000 on one-lock weekend with no sanitation, covered with toilet paper, BJ Penzholly smashed and burned. Violence comes and they provide the support. NHLC colleagues, why are we funding their budget? I will move the board to cease and I will send them a letter on it myself. We should not be funding them. We need to find counsel for you. I have recommended Na'ivi Wordman, but he also has represented myself. Our position is very clear on this board in terms of Mauna Kea. Very clear. We have filed our testimony with the National Science Foundation and also were with some of you when they came to Hilo. But we have told them no in terms of that. And also, I don't know if you know, but two of the trustees on this board were arrested there and went through two years of trial. The chair and the vice chair. We cannot let go our wahipana on this island regardless of what happened, regardless. Hold the line and if we have to throw up our own line and get arrested, then we will do so. You know, we need to do something about YPO. Kamia School and Jack Wong, they said they would help, but they're not down at the, their land is upper shoulder. I don't know, but if we need to do something with Mayor Roth, call me. We're not getting any support if we have to go back to the county council. Let OHA know. But, you know, colleagues, I don't think we should be funding NHLC to represent the surfers against the people who are the Hawaiians of YPO. No more budget, I will strike it. Thank you, Koo, call me.
Thank you, Koo. We're going to move on to our community concerns. And if you're interested in speaking tonight, please sign up with the board secretary on the corner table. This time, I'd like to introduce a very good friend of ours, somebody that's helped in the Hawaiian movement for years and years, Senator Malama Salamin.
Aloha oko, mahalo anui loa for this opportunity. Mahalo nui.
Aloha.
Aloha. I agree with the remarks that were made by trustee Trask. You know, I had the, my mother's family, their genealogies go to the kingdom of Liloa. So we're definitely, the Beamer size ohana is in YPO and my dad's family too. This has been ongoing for over 50 years, you know? And I think all the genesis of this whole situation started with Heather Kimball, who at that moment was the chairman of the Hawaii County Council and also represented YPO. So I'm thinking that Mitch Roth is really the person that we should be meeting with to put pressure on him. Because the first thing he has to do is rescind the proclamation. Okay, now that's a political situation. So I'm thinking that things can be done expeditiously. But first, we have to get political leadership, you know, elected. And at this moment, as you know, most of the county council in our hawaine, not just this moku, but throughout the state, are not, you know, kamaina that have been born in hawaine and understand, you know, our, who we are and what we're all about. So I'm thinking that, you know, we should get some, you know, resolutions or whatever it is and ask for the mayor's removal. That's how I do business from day one, you know? Yeah, send a resolution in to the mayor's office and ask for his removal from office. Okay, that's an idea. All right, I'm going to carry on, okay, of why I'm here. First, I want to express my very, my strong support of the board in their recent legislative efforts. I thought they did an excellent job, and in particular on Kakaako. I know it's extremely controversial, but I am very much in support of the development of Kakaako by the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. And the reason I am, simply this, is that that is the last big aina that's left, yeah? In that Honolulu area. And I think that the Hawaiians, we should be the ones to create a destination where Kakaako can and has the ability to do so. We just have to get over some of these political obstacles, which I don't think is, I think it's achievable. I was very much in support of the OHA legislations as to what was requested. As you know, when I was the senator, and I can speak for Brother Brickwood Galutaria, we were very much in support of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, not only getting the aina, but getting their entitlements so that they, in fact, can develop that piece as to how they see and what they want. And I also am the co-chair of the Democrat Party Legislative Affairs. And I did put in a request and asked for the dismissal of the Speaker of the House out of the Democrat Party, simply because he insulted the Hawaiians. He literally called them idiots. I mean, how do you get away with making those kind of racist remarks? It's just incredible. I just don't get it. And of course, we took it up at our convention on the Hawaii County. And the convention was very much in support. So right now, we are in the process of working on that because I feel very strongly that when the Hawaiians get, you know, when we're attacked, you know, we've got to do something. You know, we just can't sit there and go, okay. That's why I'm saying pass the resolution, ask for the impeachment of Roth, the mayor. You know, for not respecting, you know, our sacred aina and our vipo and for putting that ridiculous proclamation through. Okay, another thing. Okay, I'm also very much in support of reducing the blood quantum for successors on DHHL land. And I want to thank you because the Office of Hawaiian Affairs has been in support. And it was unfortunate, but it's the way it goes. And of course, I supported Kai Kahle for governor, but it's unfortunate that he's not there. However, Jill Takuta is very much in support, in support. And as a matter of fact, she is reintroducing the Hawaiian Preservation Act, which addresses the reduction of the, for successors from 25% to 1/32. If this isn't done quickly, you're going to see 30,000 Hawaiians evicted from their ancestral lands. Now, I have a very different take on Hawaiian homelands. I consider Hawaiian homelands to be the ancestral lands of the Hawaiian people. Because you got to remember now, this is what happened during the time of the mahale. You know, and this aina was given to the Makai na na, or the, you know, the commoner people. But I think that if you think of the DHHL lands as ancestral lands, then the 1/32 is a no-brainer, an absolute no-brainer. Okay. And then, of course, our beloved Prince Kohiyo, that was his original intention when it came to the original applicant. But what the Preservation Act does is because we had received a letter from the attorney, the solicitor, you know, from the Congress, and in his mind's eye, simply because, and I can see where they're coming from, but simply because, you know, they have the obligation to protect the act itself. So they feel the lowering of the blood quantum to 1/32 would in fact do harm to the act itself. However, he did admit for the first time, at least we have an opinion now, that did, he did admit. However, successorship really isn't a major concern of the Congress. And it's the state of Hawaii who has been empowered with the administration as being the administrators of the act. They have a great say as to how they want to administer their act. So they feel that successorship is really an administrative prerogative. Okay. Our problem is DHHL has never answered the Solicitor General's questions about the lowering of the blood quantum to 1/32. So I'm thinking that once that those questions are answered and we have put a lot of pressure on DHHL, so let's get a step in here and let's figure it out and move forward. You know, so that was good as far as I'm concerned. Okay, another point that we're working on, that I have been working and helping, is with the geothermal energy development here on the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. And the reason for this is when I went back, when I was appointed by Governor Abercrombie, when I went back to help, I had asked that, you know, I just don't go just to go, you know? I make conditions because why go, yeah, if you don't have a plan? And at that moment, I had asked the governor, because I had gotten the bill of the Hawaiians to, you know, have their mineral rights, own their mineral rights many times, vetoed by George Arioshie, the original right-to-sue bill vetoed by George Arioshie. Thank God, we got a Hawaiian in there, Waheh, you know, our governor, who at least passed the right-to-sue bill, which was pretty awesome. That's why I'm saying Hawaiians, we got to vote. Okay, we got to vote, okay? And then, of course, we were not able to get the mineral rights solved. But under the Abercrombie administration, we were able to do that. So that's a big plus for us. Now, there's an article that came out in the paper, okay, which of course I want to Tribune Harrow Westewee today. And the reason why it came out is because some reporter was there when DHHL was going through their agenda. I just want to make some corrections. Trustee Trask and myself, we are not principals of Vaika LLC, okay? We're helpers, but we are not principals, okay? So just for the record. And then another, you know, there were some statements about the report making its conclusion. I think that's kind of erroneous also. The report merely focused on the geological aspects, you know, of where there could possibly, the resource could possibly be. And we were focusing mostly on the Huma'ula area, simply because when Puakoa, not Puakoa, Wa'akuloa, we had done a lot of work because they were looking for water resources. So they did a lot of drilling. And they found that a particular areas that the team went and investigated, the water came up about 300 degrees. So in other words, we know that there's a resource there, yeah? But that's all where we're at. So I'm thinking that, you know, everybody's kind of jumping up and down. And, you know, we're at a very premature, yeah, just a beginning, you know, of the project. And then once DHHL, I know that they've approved the preliminaries, which have given us an idea of where those resources could possibly be. And then we have to move on to the next step, which would be actually going down and drilling a little. I think it's what, six inches or something, the puka, to go down and see if it in fact is there, okay? So that's where we're at with that. Okay, and then the other one I wanted to speak about, since we talked about vipo, is the importance of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs getting involved with destination management of our tourism industries in Hawaii. And, you know, we have trustees right here. You know, we have trustee Souza, we have trustee Galutaria. You know, we have trustees right on this board that have had great experience with the tourism industries. And you know how they are. The tourism industries in Hawaii have been dominated by a corporate model. This is why we're in the situation with YPO where the tourists, yeah, the tour industry gets priority. That has to huli, okay? That definitely has to change. And the only way it can change is if we have competent leadership guiding, you know, what destination management is and what defines it. I worked on a, I did a bill, I mentored a bill. That's what I do now, I mentor bills for the legislature, okay? I help them. So I mentored a bill this past session on destination management that discussed a regenerative cultural, Hawaiian cultural heritage tourism economic business model. So what this model would do is that it would give kala from the tourist industry, you know, to vipo. And it would provide opportunities so that those from vipo are actually doing the tours. You're making the decisions, where people go and visit, how long they stay. And, you know, OHA has already done a tremendous job through your newspaper. You folks have identified so many sites, right? I mean, you are like light years ahead of Kohiyo Lewis and all of them, you know? Because you folks all have a record that's already been established. You know, you have Waimea, you have the Waimea Falls Park that could be used as a real model, you know, for destination management. And the hope of destination management, because tourism is a global industry, global, yeah? And right now, the world is turning towards more destination management simply because tourists have gotten smarter. You know, they don't want to just come to Hawaii and... and stay at the Duke's Bar and get drunk. You know, they're interested, they are, they're interested in the culture. You know, the traveler is much more sophisticated. They know what's real, they know what's fake. I mean, they know when they go see a fake luau show, oh, come on, let's, you know, let's be real about it. And that's why Kaka Akoa is so important. Because Kaka Akoa could serve as that nucleus, the engine, that could create, you know, our ownership of our Hawaiian intellectual property. This, that's what really destination management is all about. Okay, the last issue I want to speak about is I'm willing to help you on the gaming. And the reason I'm willing, is I was the gaming queen in the legislature. I carried those bills for 30 years, okay? And I am very much in support of gaming for the Hawaiian people, simply because that could generate us $500 million while we're sleeping. You know what I mean? It's like a no-brainer. Okay, now, in Hawaii, because of the situation, the first step for our gaming, if you're interested in pursuing it, is number one, is we've got to get a gaming commission established by law. Because what the gaming commission does, and I'm not making this a, okay, that's what Vegas did, that's what everybody does, is this commission actually goes out there and does the investigation. Okay, you know, what is good for, for, you know, Hawaii? What do we want? You know, gaming isn't just casinos. You know, there's lottery, there's par, mega ball, I mean, there's just so much out there. And the fact is, you know, we're a tourism destination. My manao is, if those poihaulees are coming here, I want to get every penny I can from them. And if I can, hey, why not? No, that's how I think about it. And if we could do it with gaming, you know, if they can stay three days longer, you know, and blow another three grand, hey, why not? Because if the Hawaiians control that, we can decide where that money, how that money is going to be spent. So maybe in the future, we don't have to wait two years to get a water line repaired going down to Hapuna Beach, you know, on this island. Because this island, and I've talked, I've discussed this with trustee Trask, is that this island, we have 900 acres that go from Kauaihi all the way to Wailea, you know? Okay, that should be turned over to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs for destination management. See, that's how powerful destination management can be. Because we can work with the state park system, like Waimea Valley, for example, on Kauai. That should be turned over to OHA, yeah? The Konohiki rights should be returned to Ni'ihau. That's all under destination management. You know, these are just the great things that can happen. Because this is how powerful that destination management is. So and I mentored the bill, which passed out of the Senate, but unfortunately, never made it out of the House. And I'm not surprised because it takes the House a while to get it going and understanding what's going on, but that's okay. What it does is that it elevates destination management equal in the Hawaii Tourism Authority to that of corporate tourism. Yeah, you become equal partners. Because it's destination management that is going to protect the product and continue, yeah, tourism to continue its sustainability. You know, not corporate side. The corporate side doesn't sustain tourism. As a matter of fact, if you look at the corporate side and tourism in Hawaii, we're actually on a decline. But nobody wants to admit it. But Brickwood heard it, right? Did we hear that? With the reports that came forward? Corporate tourism is actually on the decline. And the only way to malama that tourism industry is you've got to have that destination management piece. Because then we're going to take tourism to a whole different level. And I think OHA is the office that can do it. I really do. Mahalo nui, thank you.
Mahalo, Senator.
I just, I just wanted to say that I'm the only, I was on the first board, OHA board. And it's Walter Reddy and I are the last two remaining. Yeah, everybody else has passed on, but, you know. And Auntie Frenchie Di Soto was the one that voted for the Native Legal Corporation. I voted no. I'm serious, because, you know, I voted no, that, those days. And then we had this big fight, then I removed her as the chairman, because that's how upset she got me, you know, because she didn't get it. Because I said, you know what's going to happen? Is that organization that we're funding is going to be fighting our own kanaka, our own people. And that's what's happening now in vaypio. You know, I don't, I don't think that's puno, I really don't. You know, they've done a lot of good, but they've done a lot of things that are not puno. That's why I don't, I didn't want to get involved with lawyers. You know, if I need a law firm, I'd just rather go hire my own and tell them what to do. Right, OHA? Get rid of that attorney, the ones that's representing.
Thank you, Senator. Moving on to the next person that wants to express community concerns. Do we, I'm not really sure about this writing, but it's Kapili'a? Oh, Kanani?
Yeah, that's Kanani.
Yes. I grew up with this lady. Kalihii.
Well, I just, I just wanted to make a few comments. First of all, a thank you for this wonderful monthly issue. Such great information, especially when COVID was happening, and you actually shared experiences by different families. It was, I mean, the information in this monthly issue publication is, I treasure it. I think it's full of information. And there are other organizations that should do the same for their beneficiaries. Number two, I want to thank you, OHA, for the disaster makana shared with the Puukapu lesis, when we had that July 1921 fire up at Puukapu, which they called Mana Road Fire. I don't know where they got that from. It started at Parker Ranch, the wind blew it all the way through. And anyway, thank you for that makana, much appreciated. And the third item is, I put there on your desk, Army US Corps of Engineers proposed plan for Section 15, just to mention that the Army Corps of Engineers has had a proposed decision for no further action in Hawaiian homes land that's from, that's approximately 13,780 acres from the beginning of Kohio Village to the farm lots to the end of Puukapu. Page two, you will see the picture of the map. So I'm just sharing this for your information. And to which, at the meeting, I did request that the Department of Health share his manao, because I expect them to accept the report. And they actually, he actually did say that they are in communion with the, with the Army Corps of Engineers. The next point, broadband, broadband equity has been an important part, it's federal, state, and county. And I have this here just as a matter of information for you. I don't know, even for the public, I don't know if anybody knows about that. There should be a decrease in our systems, $30 per family who qualifies. But there's, all the information is here, and $75 on Hawaiian homelands. And their grants that were issued, DHHL got some. And what they really need to do up here is check the bandwidth. Kanu Okaina has had major problems with Sandwich Islands communication. And as far as I'm concerned, I put the computer on, it goes on. I do what I want, I turn it off. But there are others who demand more from their system. So I just share that, that's what's happening. And that's all, mahalo.
Thank you, Auntie Kanani. Calling on Shelly Makaala Lakoa III.
Aloha.
Aloha.
My name is Shelly Makaala Lakoa III. I'm the Hanae daughter of Arthur Mahi. And I'm of the bloodline of the Ha'i navigators and a mixed breed Native American, Irish, et cetera. I'm here to testify and to make comments on a few things that are really important to me. And first of all, I wanted to talk about the funding issue. So I went to Washington to ask in Maisie Hirano's office if they could amend the Self-Determination Fund that was previously just for Indians. Hawaiians, as you know, do not meet the definition of being an Indian under CFR 25. So I went into Maisie Hirano's office and I asked them, you know, can we amend this billion-dollar account that would cover housing, water, emergencies, corrections, and a few other things? And so at first, they're like, well, this is Self-Determination Fund, it's for the Indians and this and that. And I says, no, I believe the Hawaiians, under Self-Determination Fund, have the right to some of this money. So in the year 2000, they amended it. And you may have seen on the front page of the paper, $600 million going toward building houses for Hawaiians. Now, we're sitting here in the middle of Parker Ranch, and I wanted to bring up the fact that Parker Ranch in the early 1920s, after Prince Kohio did the Hawaiian Home Commission Act, that Parker Ranch gave 99,000 acres to Hawaiian homelands for homesteading. So the problem that I saw immediately was they put it, the self-determination at 50%, which it should apply to any Hawaiian, whatever your blood quantum. And that out of $600 million, that the big island of Hawaii was only going to get 72 million out of 600 million, when we have almost half the land corpus here. Then I read on the front page that the, they decided that the roads were inaccessible here. And we're going to have to spend a whole lot of money on high-priced land in Honolulu. So I was like, okay, so what's happening here? Why, why can't you build homes here with the funding? And it all had to do with Mana Road. And as you know, Mana Road is a pretty rough road. It's like four-wheel drive and all that, horseback. But I'm just gonna, I, I used to work for the state, the county of Hawaii, and my job was looking up Native Hawaiian rights within open spaces. So I came across things like the Mahali and different land designations and whatnot. So basically, what's happening here is that you have money going toward DHHL homesteaders, which they have a longstanding right to have these funds and to be properly taken care of. But now you're, you're leaving the 49%ers out in the cold. And so that brought up the issue of HRS 172-11, which is a law of 1872, a kingdom law. So what that law is pertaining to is the Konohiki rights, the heirs of the Konohiki. And it has to do with Mahali titles. So basically, the funding should somehow be allocated properly per, per family. Now, I wanted to just let you know that in the research under the HRS 172-11, law of 1872.
Excuse me.
Yes, I'm sorry.
This is a board meeting of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs for the purpose of following the posted agenda.
Okay.
Generally, speakers are limited to three to five minutes with regards to the business on this agenda.
Okay.
None of which you have addressed yet. In the chair's absence, the vice chair calls the agenda, so wrap it up.
Okay, sorry.
Now.
Um, I would like to, at this time, make a comment about Pig, about the geothermal plant. And while I understand that, you know, we're, they're looking at preliminary things, I just need to say that if you're basing a geothermal plant on anything to do with the Puna geothermal venture, that they had a criminal infraction of 180 pounds per hour for 31 hours, and that they should have evacuated Pahoa up to 10 square miles. So my point is, for Huma'ula or other Hawaiian homelands, how many Hawaiian homesteaders are you going to displace by putting a geothermal plant, which the EPA said at that worst-case scenario, they should have evacuated Pahoa up to 10 square miles? So how much acres is that of Huma'ula? And why is it that they're allowed to dump all these things into the water? So Huma'ula, according to the report, sits on top of nine or so ocrefers. Down there at P.
Shelly, would you wind it down, please?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to let you know, I, I put on my thing, I'm not commenting on the agenda that I was allowed to comment on a community concern. So I just want to, you know, let you know that.
Your time is up.
Okay, thank you very much. And please do look up HRS 172-11. And Huma'ula is under a Mahali title and a pre-existing title. So that should be respected. And I personally do not think a geothermal plant should be put anywhere on this island, done the way that it's been down in Puna.
Thank you, Shelly. Moving on to Azizi Kayama.
Okay, aloha, Board of OHA. Aloha, ahi'ahi to the rest of you from Big Island, aloha. My name is Azizi Kayama. But I'm also known under the Kingdom of Hawaii International Public Law of Crown Lands, Ali'i Aymoku 33 Moi, Azizi Ko'ulei Kayama, of the House of Kaua'oa Moana and the House of Hayakayama, which is of Lahaina. My concern tonight is to talk to you about Maui Fire. I am, I flew here from Maui for this particular reason. I am very aware of your $5 million budget. The people in Lahaina are in great sorrow and disaster that had happened today. Of course, everybody have assumptions of who did what and why. At this point, we are at a one-month marker. And with my type of personality and my line, we went into action. we went into action on August 10th, two days after, which meaning, as the noble house of the islands that we come from under kingdom laws, which I practice international public law against American domestic law, because I am very aware, which I don't need to get into the intricate details, of how the system operates in collusion with other entities, also known as sometimes Lahui's. Now, we cannot have any of those disruptions right now and all these other entities in between this disaster that's happening. And a lot of the laws that are American laws do not recognize us nobles. And you guys don't even have to actually even reply back to us in one of your laws under American law, okay? And I'm very, very, very aware of the deep-seated collusion that everybody that not needing to be mentioned plays a big role in it, including nepotism, okay? So at this point, as a noble of Maui, I come from the Hawahana Kingdom. And the truth is, that is the real kingdom. It's not Lele. Lele was where my grandparents told their nephew to go sit, because my grandparents ruled Hana, all right? And that being said, my great-grandpa of Hayaline, William P. Haya, was the one who made the Hana courthouse. And that's who I stand from, Hana Bay, all right? My great-grandma is also Sarah Makahila Hila. And I am what you call a blue blood, because I have the blood that comes in from not just one princess, but two princes and the only son of the last five heirs of Hana Kingdom. So I am also not just that, but lono line. That means the black cape, that's from the Makahila Hila line. So I have a lot of blood lying in me that I am very aware of who is who and who is not. Okay, so I have been doing things very politically since three years ago. And what I see in the Lahaina has been very political. But as it comes down to it, when we talk about, when I hear Ku speak tonight, when I heard her speak tonight, and the lovely Auntie over there speak tonight, the main topics they all have that come out of their mouth all connects to Lahaina. That is law, land, water. And everybody's missing one thing. And this is the most important thing that nobody talks about: leasers. We have a lot of leasers, leased land. People who have leased land for many, many years that you all think own the land today, because of different LLC changing over and over, different mortgage lease, mortgage lease change over. But are they really the owners? You all think they are, but none of them own nothing. There is a reality. And the reality is, in the real estate clause, everybody has one. Down the fine line, nothing on this kingdom is yours but your objects on your land, because it belongs to the kingdom monarchy. How do I know this? I am Kayama. My land is half of Lahaina. But you think Pioneer Mill owns my land. And Pioneer Mill has been on my land for many years leasing it. Like a lot of the lands in Maconal, Ulupalakua Ranch, leasers. Parker, leasers. Thompson, leasers. Haleakula Ranch, leasers. Kaupo Ranch, leasers. Now, Kamehamea School, Waipio Valley, how beautiful. Let's go up to today. That was many years ago, 20 years ago. Okay, it's okay. Ancestors don't know, like, you guys hear this message. But we're gonna ignore that call, yeah? Okay. Why? Because the message is the truth. And you're gonna hear it tonight, because we're gonna go back to Lele. Leasers are in our way, okay? Kamehamea School is a leaser. Buying land from another leaser. Now, 2023 April years, Kaupo Ranch just sold to 4,500 acres, 21 measly peanuts. In April, 870 acres to Oprah Ulupalakua Ranch for a measly 60 million, nothing, pennies. The numbers no match the millions. I'm a businesswoman.
Wind down, Azizi.
We're gonna go down to Boxables, B-O-X-A-B-L. Know that word, B-O-X-A-B-L. These are homes that are made in Nevada. I went there personally to their factory two weeks ago. I met the owners, the Tremontis. It's not Elon Musk's idea, the smart boxes. It's the Tremontis idea. I met them personally. Why? Because when the people were crying for some third party to show up, the real third-party nobles was actually doing the job that none of you guys always doing, but these guys, but trying to figure out who did this, who did that, who did what. We need homes. My mom works for the Hyatt. There's 250 people that will be, just the Hyatt alone, that have no homes, got burnt down, okay? That means...
Azizi, your time is up.
My time is this, Auntie. It's up. You owe me. You owe me. You don't want me to say what is up. Uh-uh, not with Dylan or not with Danny or Alice, not with my Wae'hu land last year, two years ago. I was on the phone with you. Aole, I was with Hamal, Lahaina, Lindsay. My uncle is Da... Uh-uh, not right now. Auntie Rosella would want me to speak. Auntie Rosella would want me to speak.
We have a time limit.
I'm not gonna put you on the chopping block. But the point is this, you get $5 million right now, okay? And that $5 million can be halved with FEMA. I spoke to FEMA. You call Kasha Kama, Scott Curran. This is about Lahaina. You're not gonna push me away about Lahaina. Aole, no.
Well, why didn't you talk about Lahaina?
Because you guys, because you know why? The truth is, third-party sales. You can choke land. You guys get leases holding up our land. Yes, yes, yes. Because Kaupo Ranch is owned by what? Wendy Baldwin. And who? Steven Goodfeller, just so to Kamehamea School. That's the owners of Kaupo Ranch. And guess what they went through? Sell Kaupo Ranch just a couple weeks, a couple months, a week ago after that sale. Uh-uh, Oprah is buying third-party sales wide. That is illegal sale. She no own no land.
Thank you, Azizi.
No, I own land in Kaua'oa. It's Mahina Hina Au Puhuaha. And we need 400 houses there of those Boxables. I want them to put some of that $5 million towards these Boxables, okay? And FEMA said, I spoke to FEMA, Scott, no. This is about the people of Maui, you guys. You understand, they need their $5 million. Scott Kirnan is from FEMA. He's the head, okay? Scott, K-I-E-R-N-A-N. He's the operations division supervisor. I met with him on September 6th at the county building. He doesn't know what the hell to do. He told me that straightforward, and he's the supervisor of FEMA. Then I went to the Hyatt FEMA, and I spoke with Olivia over there that works with him. She doesn't know what the hell to do. Guess who know what to do? The Royal Hawaiian who know her cousin Kamai'a Monkey Call that wanted LCA 11216 up in Kaua'oa, got across the street from the west end. All that land before the airport is where we can host our crown lands, host our people. And FEMA said they go pay for hats of the Boxable houses. If they go pay for hats, you guys should put up the hat if you really care for Hawaiians. Aole, no. This is from Maui. And we need you guys to call Tasha Kama, Connie, Connie. Don't ask Connie. I get your land right here, Connie. I help feed your fam... No, Connie, I get your family. I get your family land. I am your Konohiki. You cannot, this is right here, okay? No, Aole. We are not going to have leases. The time for Maui people is right now. I am Maui, Hulu Lindsay, you are Lahaina. You are Lindsay. I am so this, I am so... This is really, this is actually, you pick up. You know what you're doing to me. And you know what I'm doing here is right. I need this $500 million for the Boxables. We need 400 of those.
We're gonna take a recess right now. We'll call our meeting back to order. And I'd like to apologize for the upsetting conversation between our beneficiary and us. You know, some of us get very passionate and we don't know how to express our feelings. And mahalo iyo for the love that you expressed. So we'll finish our community concerns. I think this is Patti. Do we have a Patti here? Oh, Anko Shuk.
Aloha.
Aloha, aloha.
Nice to see all you guys again, all Spiny. I wanna talk about prison reform. I wanna just change the subject a little bit, because they should be kinda hot here. I wanna talk about... Sorry. Sorry. I wanna talk about prison reform and what needs to be done with all these guys coming back, okay? We are, talk about land, we talk about money, we talk about what it costs, this, this, and this. I don't hear nobody come up with solutions. I have a solution for money. Can anybody tell me how much tourists visit the island on a yearly basis? Now, do we get the volcano? We get about 1.1 million more come, okay? So can anybody tell me one number of how much tourists come? It's not like we'll pick them out of the sky. About 4 million, okay? All the islands and whatnot, about 4 million. I wanna suggest what Shane taught me, yeah? A footprint clause, where you charge every adult that comes here $15 for their footprint. That's the rubbish they leave, the mark they leave, you know, just coming in and out. We can clean the park, clean the ocean better, whatnot, yeah? Every adult, $15. Every child, 10. Every animal, they bring 10. You add that up to the amount of people that come, you in almost a billion-dollar mark. That's more money than you making in one year on doing nothing, okay? Can help out the people and everything else in this community, okay? You have money for help the inmates get jobs. You have programs that you can do. Remove the invasive plants, clean the trails, clean the beaches, clean the water, clean these things that they can do, pay them. So they get jobs. So when they come out, they can apply to be supervisors for these jobs. Because we know, not everybody gonna hire them in this community, okay? That's one. Second, now you get money for the Kupuna programs, okay? You can take care of all the programs in the Kupuna program and not touch $1 federal aid, not touch $1 from the state. Nobody gotta ask for money. The money is already there, okay? The schools is my big one. The state can build a school, but they cannot maintain them. The school costs $2 million to build. Five years later, the school need work on the bathroom, need this, that, and the other money. But the taxes never change, never change. So where that money going? We just built the rail. I don't know exactly how much money is being taken on the taxes, okay? Everybody here is asking for money for this, money for that, this program, this program, that. I don't hear the real money being transferred to all of this stuff here, but the tax no stop. In fact, it increases. Where that money go? This money is created amongst this unit right here, suggesting as a footprint law, tourists pay this money to come here. We know this the biggest destination right now, because we get the volcano, okay? Any other place they go, they worry about getting kidnapped or whatnot. So we should capitalize on this while we can, okay? It don't cost us nothing. It makes money for every project and everything within a community. The money comes every year. The schools, there is no way anybody can tell me schools should not feed the kids free lunch, okay? Or give them something, recess time, juice, cookie, whatever it is. How can we not have that? And then they talking about letting go cafeteria workers. There's jobs there, okay? What little is here, everybody eat away at them, eat away at them, eat away at them. But you look at the pay raises, police department, 30%. Come on, come on, gang, come on. Everybody else, 6%, 3%, okay? We cannot afford this. We gotta create our own. So I am telling you guys, Shane is in a back there someplace, okay? We talked about this before. It is a good thing to try and start, because it don't cost you nothing, it makes you millions and millions of dollars, and now it can be used for a lot of things. In fact, it's more than your budget. It's more than the whole budget that the federal, the state give you. It's more, just by doing that. And you put how much people to work. All the old folks now, they hang out down the beach, yeah? They come, all the cars, they count them, okay? Make sure nobody rob them, nothing, right? They don't wanna make the 911 calls, okay? You're putting them to work, you're utilizing them, okay? The old folks, they keep the kids in line. The kids learn that they get jobs, they get something, yeah? I mean, it's just community, within the community, yeah? The money, I don't know how you guys gonna put them together, but Shane, I guess you can be the head of that, you know, to determine how the money go and whatnot, yeah? But this is something to think about, because it solves Kalapa's problem. It solves Kona's problem. It solves a lot of Lahaina's problems, okay? Lahaina does not need words. They need lawyers, okay? They need lawyers to save their land, save whatever they have left and whatnot. Words ain't gonna cut it. Lawyers need money. All this stuff that I'm talking about helps to protect, pay, and you're doing it within your own community. I guess her name is Alice, 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 yeah? She would understand a lot, because she's someone, just like me, okay? Listen to what is being said. Trying to give a new way of looking at things, okay? Not grumbling, pointing fingers and demanding and yelling, but find solutions. Trying to put the thing together. Finding ways of doing this, doing that, and utilizing what you already have. We have tourism, okay? We do not capitalize on tourism. Everybody else does.
Patti, wind down, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. Any questions? None? All right, I see you guys did, thank you.
Mahalo. Momi Nu'u Hiva?
La mai kaku. I'm a school counselor and I teach driver's ed at La Poihoi Community Public Charter School. We're not a Hawaiian-focused charter school, but we trying. There's a couple of things that I wanted to talk about, just as questions for you all. I'm so grateful that you guys are all here. One of them, I think there was a little bit that was mentioned about it, but refresh my memory. To my understanding, OHA is supposed to have an inventory of all the kuliana lands, the land grants, the royal patent. Is that, does OHA have an inventory of all of that?
We don't have yet. We're working on it?
Oh, okay. So I was curious about that, because on that same topic, I noticed when I read the governor's emergency proclamation on Build Beyond Barriers Working Group, that OHA was not included in that group. And that concerns me. If that's something that perhaps can be changed, if that's something that's not gonna be rescinded. Is there, I mean, I would like to know if there's more information coming out of that.
What working group are you referring?
The Build Beyond Barriers Working Group?
Yes, we were not.
Yeah. So the reason why I was curious about that is because a lot of the information that came about that group is including people that are not too concerned about Hawaiian needs. And so I was hoping that that group would... And so I was hoping that that group would include OHA. Because if they're going to be looking at changing different, making it easier for developers to come in, how come it's so hard for Hawaiians to get land developed if they're making it so easy for corporate people to develop? And so I look at a lot of Hawaiian homes. My family live on Molokai. My father's homestead is in Halehua. The kind of stuff that we got to jump through now for DHHL to build housing. And if the governors issued this proclamation to make it easier for certain groups to come in, then we should have a seat at the table. OHA should have a seat at that table in that working group. Because if it's going to make it easier for them to build houses and develop land, then we need to have that same ability to make it easier for our people to build land. And I think that there's a lot of Hawaiians that want to get on the land, and a lot of the barriers are that the infrastructure is not there. And so if they're making the qualifications for developers to make it easier for them to develop, then how come we're not going to get those same benefits? To make it easier for our people to get on the land. So that is one thing that I wanted to just bring up, that I would hope that OHA would push for that. The other thing was, I have a lot of family from Maui and Lahaina. My auntie Yvonne lost her home. I just, while you guys were talking about, you know, the million dollars that came from Jim, I just texted my cousins from Lahaina. I said, "Hey, you guys want to go get some money from that?" And they said, "No, we never, we never know." So, but is OHA gonna step up to, I guess, encourage the governor office? Because I would like to see moratoriums on property taxes for all those affected. Moratoriums on mortgages, at least for five years, for all of our people in Lahaina and Kula, anybody that's affected by that, so that they're not having to worry about where's the money going to come from to pay all that. And if OHA could help with that, to push for moratoriums, also price gouging, because I see that, you know, there's a lot of people that are jumping on the bandwagon, and they're like, "Everybody needs materials." And so we would like to see that there's moratoriums on price gouging, especially for building supplies. And then the other thing was for, I know that there was commentary on putting geothermal. And I'm totally against geothermal. Like, I don't think that that's a good idea for us. Everything that has happened down in Puna, and of course, looking at Mauna Kea, if we're going up Humo Ula area where they've done the drilling and the development up there that the plans are for that area. That's our ancestor. And I think that there needs to be maybe a working group to talk to people more about some of those plans that are going on, talking. I just think that we shouldn't be putting pokeynols into our mama. That's my own opinion, but thank you.
Thank you, Momi. Okay, our final speaker for the night is Berri Lau.
I'm so sorry.
I'm so sorry it's taking so long, Auntie. Is it on? Can you hear me? Oh, okay. So first of all, Papa Hawaii taught us, we're going to ask permission. Can I have permission to speak, kupuna? So my name is Berri, yep, Lau. I see a Manoa Ola shirt right there. My concern was just real quick, and I'm going to, I'm going to turn on my timer. So I don't, so I don't talk for a group. Okay, so one of my concerns is, and I don't know if there is any programs going on right now for like the child trafficking and things like that, you know? And also for mothers, like battered mothers. I know that there's other things out there, but I was wondering if OHA had any programs or have you thought of anything like that? That was my main concern, was child trafficking and homes, places for our battered mothers, or even sometimes there's battered fathers, you know? But this was such an educational experience. I love it. Auntie, nice to see you. I didn't know everybody was going to be here. I was in Longstrug shopping, and I saw these two guys with the OHA shirt. I said, "What you guys doing now over here?" I said, "You guys going to have a meeting or what?" And he said, "Yeah, over here at six-thirty." I said, "I'm coming." So I said, "How did you let the people know?" And they said, "Oh, in the paper." Well, sometimes I don't get to read my OHA paper till like maybe one month or two months later. I just save it, and when I have time, I read, you know, whatever. But I thought maybe, like Hawaiian homes, when we have meetings, they send us a little postcard in the mail. So I was wondering if maybe that might be a possibility when you have these? This is the first time that I knew about these meetings, but they said this is the only one you have. Before, you had it in Hilo, and you had it in Kona, yeah? I mean, I would drive to go to the meeting, but I'm so glad that God sent these two boys into Long's, and I saw them. And sometimes, Mahalo Kekua puts me in different places. Like, I've testified at two legislature things, and just because I happened to be there and a concern was about Hawaiian homeland, you know? So I went to testify. I'm so sorry that this has been an all-day thing for you. Please, I hope I'm the last person, and you guys can go and rest. And I heard that you had a wonderful, was it breakfast this morning or lunch?
I had a wonderful breakfast, lunch, and dinner.
Okay. Thank you so much for coming, and welcome to our little community. And mahalo for all the kupuna that came. And I'm, I wish there was more of our people here. You know, I don't think they knew, or maybe they, you know, like Auntie Kanani knew. I didn't know until the last minute. So maybe send out little cards like Hawaiian Homes does, because you have all the addresses of the people that live here, right? I mean, or, I don't know, they said there was an ad. I never read my newspaper yet. I have it when I have time by my bed, and then I go, you know, open. So anyway, mahalo, Auntie. Love you guys. Thank you for all you do. And nice to see you, all my cousins up there, okay? Okay, that was, that was three minutes. Thank you. Thank you, Berri. That was our last speaker. Don't we have any more that want to speak? No, thank you. We're tired. We want to thank you for being here this evening and listening to all of the testimonies, our comments. And we will be here tomorrow morning at ten o'clock for our regular board meeting. So if you're, you feel like it, please come back and share some time with us. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Don't all rush to the microphone. Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Akina.
Aye, and aloha.
Trustee Alapa.
Aye.
Trustee Galuteria.
Aye.
Trustee Souza.
Aye.
Trustee Trask.
Aye.
Trustee Wahehe.
Yes.
And Chair Hulu Lindsay.
Yes.
We have nine yes. We are adjourned.
Thank you. Mahalo, everybody.